Good evening, everyone. We're all here to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, March 26, 2013. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice.
Thank you. Is anyone from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Erin Quinney, 8 Crescent Street. And I'm coming on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary PTA tonight. The PTA would like to thank everybody that came out to the Butterbraids pickup and made that such a success. We had multiple members from the PTA that were present. We had students from the high school, Jacob Maldonado and Lucas Saint Germain. Teachers came, Mrs. Briggs was there, Mrs. Canoyer. And the Southbridge PTA raised over $7,000 in that fundraiser. And also, we have three new principals that will be taking over for one day at Charlton Street School. That will be Maximus Reno at Eastford Road, Samuel Carrasco, and at West Street School, Mari Cologne. So they were the top sellers for their schools, so they're going to get to be principal for the day. So we thank you to the principals for giving them that opportunity as well. This Thursday is the Mother-Sun event, and there has been papers that have gone home that say that it starts at 6:30. It is 5:30 if anybody wants to get pictures taken at the cheese booth, which will be props will be available, and moms can get their pictures taken with their sons. It's not exclusive to mothers and sons, however, it's pre-K through 5th grade boys, and any significant female adult in their life can certainly bring them. The cost is $5 for adults who aren't members of the PTA. All children are free. There will be, the Transformers will be there, and Frank D'Amelio will be doing a magic show. Snack packs will also be available, so don't forget your money. $3 per snack pack. At the April 3rd PTA meeting, we'll be nominating officers for next year. If you have any interest, you can message the PTA on Facebook or send an email utilizing the Southbridge PTA website, which is www.southbridgepta.com. You can click on Contact Us and send an email that way. Also upcoming is the Southbridge Elementary Arts Initiative, which is a subcommittee of the PTA. It's headed by Julie Hurley, and they'll be putting on a talent show, which is going to be called "A Time to Shine." Flyers will be going home in backpacks soon, so be on the lookout for that. They'll have the dates for auditions, rehearsals, and the actual event. So get your family-friendly talents ready to showcase them for the community. And the money that's raised will then benefit the instrument lending program that will then in turn benefit the elementary band programs. And that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public this evening? Thank you.
Rose Lamro, 689 Charlton Street. I was just told today, so, excuse me. I'm part of the Master Planning Board, and there's going to be a roundtable discussion that I was told to let you all know about if anybody's available. It's going to be here Wednesday, April 3rd at 6:00 p.m., and it's promote education for all. And then the only other thing that I wanted to say today is that, I don't know if you guys knew, but Dr. Tumalo and Nancy Tumalo gave me an extra $500 to do as I pleased for the school, and I just wanted to let you know that I divided it. Did $250 to Special Education and $250 to the Southbridge Band Association. So I just wanted to let you know that. So have a nice night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else from the public? Last chance. All right, we'll move on. Next, we'll call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Max?
Dr. Domingo.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Lozo.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Present.
Mrs. Principay.
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. We have the approval of the minutes. Regular School Committee, March 12, 2013. Do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Principay, second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Any errors, discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
I'd like to abstain, seeing I was absent from the last meeting.
Any other abstentions?
I believe I was absent as well.
Okay. So we have five in favor, two abstentions. Minutes passed. Moving on to Chairwoman's announcements, I just have two tonight. First off, I promised everyone a copy of Mr. Nebuchaw's contract, so everybody receive that in their packets. You should have that. If you have any questions, you can come see myself or Mr. Nebuchaw. Also, what I put on your tables are, even though we have a wonderful superintendent right now, we still have to think about doing a superintendent search. So I have contacted three different groups, and two of them have responded. I've given you those responses, just to keep you guys updated as to what I'm doing. We'll have the third response at the next meeting, and then I hope to have these gentlemen come and present how the process works, what they do, and how it all works at one of our April meetings, probably the second April meeting or the first May meeting. So that's just to keep everyone informed and to let the public know that we are starting that search early, so that we have a good head start on that. Next, we have reports of the representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Faith Macharia. How are you, Faith?
Hi, hello, everyone. I'll start with events that are coming up. We have the band students who will be attending, will be going to Hop Kinton High School for a band contest, and I hope they do great. Also, spring sports have started. The tennis courts are great, I'll say, speaking firsthand, because I play tennis, and it's really awesome. From the softball students, they had a Cape Cod trip last weekend, but got canceled because of the snow, unfortunately. They are doing great, but they have, they're concerned about the fields not being ready, and games are starting next week, so we can get that going. That would be great. And that's it for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Faith. Moving on, School Committee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you. I do not have a report this evening, and I will be planning a meeting for the early first part of April. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay.
Thank you. Our last meeting was March 13 at 25 Colav. In attendance was myself and Laura McLaughlin. Mrs. Donovan was excused. That day, we worked on school councils and the school improvement plans, and I'll get you updated when we vote the readings. Our next meeting is tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., 25 Colav, in Room M100, and we will be reviewing or continuing our review on the community use of school facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Budget, Facilities, and Transportation. Dr. Domingo.
Thank you. The Subcommittee held the meeting last Wednesday. On March 20, we are continuing to review the progress of the budget being proposed for the next fiscal year and reviewing the current budget. Our next committee is tomorrow, the 27th, at 6:00 p.m. at High School again.
Mr. Lozo.
Just as a member of the Chairman of the Building Committee, I'd just like to comment to the softball question. We had a Building Committee meeting. The fields will be used this year. What we've done is the construction and the finalization of the seeding and fertilizing will take place after baseball and softball. The only reason why they just got out for their first day was because of the moisture on the turf on all fields. And the Cape got four inches, we didn't get anything, but they canceled down at the Cape. But the facilities and management has been notified by the Building Committee, and Cisigli came up with a very good idea, because we were promised that we could use the fields, and we will be using those fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay.
Thank you. We do not have any meetings scheduled, and there's nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Communication, Family, and Community Engagement Subcommittee, Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've scheduled a meeting, and one is either, has either been posted or is in the process of being posted, for Monday, April 8, 6:30 p.m. in the meeting room on Colav.
Is that Room M? I don't know.
M100.
M100.
M100. On Colav.
Thank you. Moving on, we have presentation this evening. We have the Quarterly Progress Report. We have Ms. Ava Mitchell, the Associate Commissioner, Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and Dr. Nadine Banda, the Plan Monitor, Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you, Chair Woodruff, and thank you, Members of the School Committee, Superintendent Nembrecow, and the public. As you know, we're here tonight to discuss the second quarter report that covers the period of, for this year, that covers the period of December 2012 to February 2013. So before we begin with Monitor Nadine Banda's presentation, just wanted to introduce a member of our staff that is a leader of the Turnaround Monitoring Unit that is going to be coming to School Committee meetings sometimes in my stead. So before we begin, I just want to introduce her. Her name is Laura Rashane. So you can get used to her face as well.
Nice to meet you.
All right. So with that said, I'm just going to pass the microphone. I know Nadine has a lot she wants to share with you.
Good evening. As Ava said, this is the second report this year, so it's the report of the second quarter. In December, we were pleased to hear that the School Committee extended to Mr. Nembrecow the intern superintendent position through June 2014. Superintendent Nembrecow reported in the last Highlights Meeting that he's begun to address the FOCI that the Southbridge Public Schools have identified as the objectives that would give them the most leverage in increasing student achievement. So we're very pleased that he's looking at the AIP and that Southbridge is moving along. He's discovered that in some areas, the infrastructure is not strong enough to accomplish the goals as set out, and so he has begun the process of reevaluating the goals of the AIP as he continues to understand what needs to be done to improve student achievement here for all Southbridge students. This report addresses the present goals in place, documenting items that could be addressed, and we expect that there may be some changes in the plan as Dr. Nembrecow continues with the plan. So Strategic Objective Number One is to implement high-quality curriculum and instruction programs to support the achievement of all students. The curriculum committees in math and English language arts continue their work on creating robust curriculum maps in these subject areas, and the district is making plans to begin the same process and to use the same format for curriculum maps in science and social studies. Having the curriculum in place is important, but ensuring that all teachers are effectively teaching the curriculum so that all students can access it is even more important. The Superintendent reports that all professional development now is being focused on effective instruction. To ensure that research-based instruction techniques are being implemented in every classroom, documentation submitted by the district shows that there are district learning walks and informal observations occurring in each school. Both of these result in direct feedback to teachers. One early evidence of change target that the district set is that data will show 5% improvement monthly in the posting of sound objectives that drive the lesson in every classroom, in the use of a variety of instructional techniques, and in the use of higher-order questioning. Teach Point Data, which is, I'm sure you know, is the program that all administrators are using to record evaluations, observations, classroom observations. So Teach Point Data shows that from January to February, the use of sound objectives in classrooms increased from 80 to 87%, and the use of a variety of instructional strategies increased from 78 to 88%, but the use of higher-order questioning decreased from 88% to 79%. So this is an area that remains to be worked on. 100% of administrators' unannounced classroom visits now results in feedback to teachers, which includes both commendations and opportunities to learn. And Teach Point Data shows that in January, 49% of feedback for improvement resulted in changes to instructional practice, and in February, 54% of feedback resulted in changes to instructional practice. ANET has developed a tool, that's the Achievement Network, that's doing benchmark testing for the district, has developed a tool called a Temperature Check, which reports the percentage of students that ANET considers to be on target for MCAS proficiency. The district has analyzed that data and compared it to the Composite Performance Index, or the CPI, goals it set for each school. Based on ANET data from Quarter 1 to Quarter 3 in ELA, the district considers Charlton Street School and the middle school to be below target, and West Street School to be above target. In math, the district considers all three schools to be below target to reach their 2013 CPI goal. Important areas that Southbridge is working on include improving achievement for English language learners and special education populations. Based on reports from both directors, these are areas of great need. The directors report that sound structures are not always in place to meet the needs of these students. However, both directors have written targeted plans for what they will do to provide structure, professional development, policy compliance, and effective instruction for these populations, and both are hard at work on those plans. Results of ANET testing shows little academic improvement for either of these subgroups from first quarter to third quarter. The Superintendent reported that he has instituted a keen focus on these areas in terms of structure, services, and quality of instruction. He's adding department heads at the middle and high school levels and special education to increase accountability. An important area that this objective addresses is increased in meaningful parent involvement. Indicators of parent involvement include student attendance and suspension data. From Quarter 1 to Quarter 2, overall attendance has dropped by 4%. Low-income attendance has dropped by 5.2%, special education attendance by 4%, and English language learner attendance by 4.1%. The district goal of 90% of all high-need students in grades 1 to 12 being on target for completing all grade or course requirements has been met in all grades except grades 7, 9, 10, and 11. From Quarter 1 to Quarter 2, suspensions increased in grades 6 to 12, with a particularly large increase in grade 9. There is a freshman academy in grade 9 that should be addressing these issues. The Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment reports that there will be a renewed focus on the freshman academy. A Subcommittee of the Southbridge School Committee has begun work on meaningful parent involvement. Between January and February, they've held nine community forums. Invitations were sent out in both Spanish and English, and attendance ranged between 1 and 10 people. They presented a PowerPoint on what the AIP is and brainstormed on how parents and community members can help the district work toward meeting the goals of the AIP. As well, each principal is putting together a plan to include parent input on such important issues as discipline, and then will put in place multiple ways that parents can get involved with their child's education. Although this is a strong start to promoting community involvement in the schools, there's not yet been a plan put in place to meaningfully engage the Hispanic community in the schools, and we look forward to seeing that. Objective Number Two is to establish a data-driven culture to support and monitor the achievement of all students. The data that the district is collecting and disseminating to teachers and administrators is comprehensive, and it includes results for ANET, DIBELS, and Acuity testing at the high school. Principals are receiving trend reports for their school and comparative data for all schools. The district is building a system that will allow any teacher or administrator to access that data. There are now two people in the district who devote half-time to readying data for teachers and administrators, so data has really become a stress point in the district. One of the ways that data is being used is to develop reteach plans. That is, when a class, a group within a class, or an individual student has demonstrated that they do not understand a concept, a reteach plan is constructed by the teacher. Once the reteaching is completed, the district retests those students to determine mastery. The goal of the district was for 65% of students in ELA and 75% of students in math to improve as a result of reteaching. The District Action Plan Tracker shows that reteach plans were not written at the middle, school, and math. The percentage of students improving on retests in the A2-ANET assessment, Charlton in ELA, 71%, and in math, 74%. West Street School in ELA improved 70% and in math, 72%, and middle school, ELA, 69%. The high school set the goal that at the end of the quarter, grade reports in ELA and math would show that 90% of students are on target for completing all grade levels or course requirements. The analysis submitted by the district showed that after the second quarter, grade 9 in ELA, 74% of the students are on target, and in math, 70%. Grade 10 in ELA, 79% are on target, and in math, 52% are on target. In grade 11, in ELA, 73% of students are on target, and in math, 48%. In grade 12, in ELA, 78% are on target, and in math, 48% are on target. These numbers are much below the target and are alarming, especially in mathematics. The Superintendent reports that his team is in the process of developing interventions for these students. One part of this strategic objective is to implement and monitor processes and structures of effective instruction to serve the needs of all students. The School Committee has ratified the new educator evaluation system, and implementation has begun in the district, and we anticipate that this will have an effect on instruction. Strategic Objective Number Three, provide high-quality professional development programs to support the achievement of all learners and students. This goal is important if the district is going to see changes in classroom practice that results in increased student achievement. The district set an early evidence benchmark that 100% of principals would create and implement action plans for professional development for each month's faculty meeting to improve deficiencies identified on previous learning walks. This has happened in all elementary schools, but not at the middle and high school. The Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment reported that she will take over the planning of high school and middle school-based faculty meetings beginning in March, and will ensure that those faculty meetings consist of targeted professional development. The district set the short-term outcome for ELL students and students with disabilities in grades 3 to 8 to show a five-point increase on each interim assessment in ELA and math from the baseline for each of the next three assessments. Results submitted did not show positive trends for these students, as reported. A final short-term outcome was that 100% of students in grades 1 to 12 are on, that are progress monitored by the school-based support teams, the SBSTs, which show improvement on progress monitoring forms in the area of academics, discipline, and attendance. As reported by the Superintendent, the district does not have a sound process for identifying students who should be discussed at SBST, or a process for supporting them and deciding if they need additional services. The new Special Education Director has taken on this responsibility and is developing a structure for identification of students, for the work of the SBST, for IEP meetings, and for identification of students who need additional services. In summary, although there has been some progress this year, particularly in the area of data use, there are many systems that need to be put in place prior to the district being able to carry out the major parts of its accelerated improvement plan. The interim Superintendent is working with his administrative team to identify these areas of need and to address them as soon as possible. Next steps, to put structures in place to meet the needs of ELL students and students with disabilities. This includes identifying students who should be discussed at the SBST, and then developing processes for supporting these students. Ensure that all teachers and principals are trained to meet the needs of these students. Develop and implement a detailed plan for the improvement of classroom instruction that will be implemented and assessed in every classroom in Southbridge. Develop a plan to provide focused professional development to all principals throughout the year on such topics as classroom observations, giving feedback, driving data discussions, and having difficult conversations, and then hold principals accountable to implement what they are learning. The through line from the district work to the school, to the classroom, should be clearly delineated and communicated, so that everyone in the district understands how this will occur. And finally, the newly ratified education evaluation policy to evaluate the skills of all teachers and administrators. Put plans in place to support people who need it, and then hold all personnel accountable.
Is there any, any questions? Is it okay if they ask questions at this time, or do you want to wait till? Anyone? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Dr. Banda, thank you for coming this evening. I'll just start at the beginning of your report, so that my questions just kind of follow chronologically as to how you presented them. My first question related to the second paragraph under Strategic Objective Number One that begins with the Paragraph 1, Early Evidence. In that particular paragraph, you talked about that the use of higher-order questioning decreased from 88% to 79%, and I was questioning whether was that at any particular grade level, or is that just a district-wide percentage?
The analysis that was given to me was district-wide.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Page 2, Paragraph Number 1. It's something that you did not mention in your report, but it was something that I questioned when I read. It mentioned that the administrators of the district had hoped to use the PD-360, the new online, the PD tool, and I realized that it couldn't take effect until the ratification of the evaluation tool. Now that we have ratified that teacher evaluation tool, is that something, are you aware, is that something that we have begun to use, or that we will be using in the very near future?
My understanding is that it has begun, but perhaps the Superintendent can answer that.
It'll be done. And we're in the process of, again, the evaluation was approved so late, and then our first professional development was snowed out. So we've had perfect storms here, and we're trying to deal with all of those issues. And so we're cramming a lot of stuff into a very short period of time, and so we've gone through. Our first goal is to ensure all of the teachers have their SMART goals in place, they log on to Teach Points, so we would have all of that, and so we're taking those steps incrementally, and then PD-360 at the appropriate time will be implemented.
Okay. Thank you for that. On that same page, Paragraph Number 4, when you're talking about different attendance rates and such, right in the middle of the paragraph, it said the district goal of 90% of all high-need students in grades 1 through 12 to be on target. I just didn't know what the definition was of high-need students.
So those are your students who are low-income, who are ELL, who are special-need students? So it's your subgroup?
And then, okay, page 3. I didn't know, if you could please just give me a quick little snapshot. This was the first time that I had read or heard of the Acuity Test, and I pardon my ignorance if this is something that happens on a regular basis, but I didn't know if you could just explain. Obviously, it's done at the high school, but if you could just tell me what that test entails.
So this is a new test that was just instituted, and I would leave that to either the Superintendent or the Director of Curriculum Instruction.
Amy, want to address those?
Acuity.
Just come to the microphone, Amy, please.
The Acuity Testing started late in the year, because there were technical difficulties with the program itself. We've gotten it started, and I believe they have done one test that we have the results for, which for, which you should have received at some point. But there are still some technical difficulties with the questions, but it is the ELA benchmark test for grades nine through twelve. So where we're using ANET, the high school is using Acuity, and it's a similar-type test for the benchmarks, and it's based on the Common Core standards for ELA, and that's what the English teachers are using in nine through twelve right now. We can give you more information on that if you want.
Thank you, Amy. One question I had, Dr. Bond, are moving down that same page to the second paragraph, where you talk about the reteach plans, and it states that the reteach plans have not been written at the middle school level for math. Is there any explanation as to why that is not so?
Let Amy stand up there, yeah.
They actually have begun to be done. With the implementation of those two halftime data positions at the middle high school, Rebecca Sweetman is actually the middle school point person, and she's been working with the math teachers at the middle school, and they have been doing those reteach plans. So they're on track now as well.
Okay, that's good to hear, thank you.
So if you'll remember, this report goes through February.
Correct, yeah, that's fine. I'm almost done. As part of your summary, Dr. Bond, you mentioned that there are many systems that need to be put in place. Is Mr. Nemberko aware of what those systems are? Do you provide any assistance to him, or propositions to him, or recommendations of what systems we're talking about and how those systems can be fixed?
Actually, those are systems that he has talked to me about. So those are systems that he is identifying, and he has shared with me.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you. And one last question that I had, and perhaps, Amy, this would be to you as well. The beginning of the report mentioned about the robust curriculum maps that are being So I read that first, but then at the very, very end, I also read that curriculum itself for ELA and math has not been written for the rest of the school year, and I'm concerned about that. It's one of those charts, Dr. Bond, that you did not present, but basically, it said that teachers were trained at the beginning units for curriculum, however, they are yet to receive or be trained in units that will take them to the end of the year. So I'm wondering, where are we as far as our curriculum is concerned of a beginning and an ending point for our teachers, and whose job is it to write these curriculums?
So, right now, the ELA and math teachers, starting last spring, had begun writing these curricula through the Atlas program, and they've been working with Karen Ryan in the evenings, on Thursday evenings. Every three weeks, there's a team of twelve teachers that do this, K through twelve for ELA and math, and they've been writing these, and many of the grades have it done through the end of the year, and they have all their resources. We purchased the resources for them. There are a few grades that are still working on it. And for next year, one of the goals is for the science and social studies teachers to be trained with the Atlas system so they can start entering their curriculum as well. But they have been also working on it. They were tasked with that at the beginning of the year to create common assessments for social studies and science, and then they'll be entering their curriculum through the Atlas program next year. So we do have robust curriculum in place, and we're right at the very end with the ELA and math. There's very little left undone for those two subject areas.
Okay, maybe it was just a misinterpretation of what I read. It made me lead to believe that we had these maps, but they only went up to a certain point, and then we didn't have curriculum. You know, we just got our mid-cycle third-quarter reports, and I'm thinking, wow, we don't have curriculum now till the end of June, so I just needed to make sure of that. All right, thank you very much.
It was more that it was an ongoing process.
Yes, okay, I'm all set. Thank you both very, very much.
Mrs. Princip?
Yes, I believe my question may also go to Ms. Allen about the reteach. When the class group or an individual student has demonstrated that they don't understand a concept, a reteach plan is constructed. How is it implemented for a group or an individual?
So what happens is, this is part of the ANET process as well. They've taught us to go through this process with the teachers. So once they get the results of the benchmark test, they look at the standards in which each particular class, or groups of kids in a class, or even individuals within a class, where their weaknesses are. And then they create an action plan based on those weak standards, and reteach those standards to the students again, and then reassess the students on those standards to see if they've made any improvement. Sometimes they find that there's a trend, that maybe the entire class did poorly on one standard, so they'll reteach that standard. Sometimes it's broken down. Now we're really starting to break it down to much smaller. We started with larger groups, with whole class, and now it's being broken down, right down to individuals. And they'll create action plans where there may be two students that were weak in this standard, four that were weak in this standard, and then they create stations or group work in the class to do the reteach with those, and then they reassess.
That's what I wanted to know. It's within the classroom, thank you.
Mrs. McLoughlin?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies, nice to see all of you. Could you, for the public, define higher-order questioning? This comes up a lot, and I was just wondering if you can let the public know what you mean by that.
Sure. So questions that we engage students in can be at many different levels. One is memorization, and that's what we consider a low-level skill. But when we ask students to really engage with the material, to analyze the material, to do a compare and contrast, to think about their own thinking about the material, to begin to ask questions to further their knowledge about the material. So we call it engaging the students in rich student discourse, and that's what higher-order thinking is. So not just regurgitating material, but really engaging with it, discussing it, understanding it, and being able to talk with other students about it.
Okay, thank you. I told somebody recently in my generation, just called critical thinking, got to think the same way, okay. A question that I did have on the report was on page three, mathematics. Looks like we're having a problem with math in the district. And I see here, and perhaps this is a question for Buzz, the superintendent reports that his team is in the process of developing interventions for math. I'd like to know what some of those might be.
Well, the first issue is the attendance policy. A kid misses five classes, automatically gets fifty-five. And so the group has been analyzing the attendance, and that's something we need to bring up to the school committee. That's why the first quarter, the grades were substantially higher, the second, winter time, you miss five, you go to fifty-five percent, and that's the first issue that we've identified with that. So that could be, we're looking at attendance all the way across the district. One of the things we need to be doing is coming up with plans to increase student attendance. So if they're in school, they come to class regularly, the likelihood and the learning improves, you know, not complicated. We've looked at some of the records, we have some students that have been out thirty times already, so the chances of them being successful is limiting. So that's the first thing. This really disturbs us with the mathematics being what they are. ELA generally, across the state, across the country, they perform and score higher. Mathematics, we have this idea that it's a very discreet subject, it doesn't include higher-order thinking skills, we're going to become repetitive, and we just bore kids out of it many times, and I've observed that on a fairly regular basis everywhere I've been. What we need to do is look very critically at our math teaching and math content knowledge in the upper elementary first. That's one of the issues that has to be addressed with content institute, not pedagogy, and then work our way through. And oftentimes, our best teachers teach the advanced classes rather than the reverse. I've looked at the class sizes, and that disturbs me greatly in the middle school, where the largest class sizes are the students that have the greatest need. I looked at one-sixth grade, four classes, advanced class eleven, eleven, twenty-four, and twenty-four. So I said, well, what about if you just did twenty-two, and then took the twenty-four and twenty-four, and that three teachers go to it? Would that not affect? So this is part of the thing, is the focus and the whole aspect of math instruction has got to change substantially in most cases. That's what I see as that. It's a combination of scheduling, it's a combination of grouping, and it's a combination of time. We have a seven-period day in the middle school, and they used to have a six-period day. So in forty-some minutes a class, by the time they sit down, get organized, take attendance, you have fifteen minutes. So that's one of the things we have to look at. If we believe math and ELA are two critical courses, we may have to look at our schedule and expand the time, particularly in the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and work with that. So that's, they used to have six-period day in the middle school, they went to the high school with the seven periods. So now you have a twelve-year, eleven-year-old kid with seven different instructors coming at him every forty-some minutes. That's organization more than anything else. So it may be like any one of us having, I have seven bosses, but that's okay, I'm old. But just put yourself with a little kid running from class to class to class with a different expectation. It's the structure that really creates a problem. And math, when you ask about higher-order thinking skills, I used to be director of the Padea Center at the University of North Carolina, which is basically Socratic questioning, Socratic seminar. And what really needs to be is engaging the students in conversation, engaging the students in thinking, engaging, rather than boom, 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 you answer a question, two seconds, next kid goes, three seconds. And we've done that for a hundred years, and now it becomes more complex, it becomes problem-solving, it becomes understanding, creating questions, and that's part of what I see as the biggest problem. It's pretty rote. If you get it, fine, you move up. If you don't, well, you don't. And so one of the things with the contract, I thought, when I first came, we could have academic enrichment, but the contractual arrangements, I got nixed on that one pretty quickly, because that would be another preparation, and the contract calls for this, so I had to regroup. I spent a lot of time initially, pretty excited about the fact that we could create, for each student that goes to academic enrichment, have the teacher prepare a little folder for them, go over there, the teacher would be able to work with them. Didn't fly. So this is, but I think we need to really look hard at sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade math and so on, and then probably move maybe algebra down and so on, and then really develop a more comprehensive, what international schools call maths curriculum, rather than little blocks that are related to each other. I've been arguing this for forty years, and the public schools haven't gotten anywhere yet. And I'll still continue until I'm seventy, which is pretty soon. But anyway, the first issue is attendance, okay? That's a huge drop-off. I think Paul did all those numbers and everything else, a little while ago, we're going over those numbers before. We addressed that, and once a kid gets fifty-five, he's done. You know that, right? She's smiling at me, the kid's done. And so what ways do we have to engage the student, rather than being punitive? It's really easy to say, if you've been absent more than this, a policy says this, and you can hide behind the policy without looking at the needs of the kid, very easily.
But that's not a district policy, that was something that was implemented by the school, right?
Well, I don't know.
In years past, right, correct?
School policy, right? The handbook, that needs to be changed.
Absolutely.
That needs to be changed. We need to look at the needs of the kid and work with the needs of the kid, rather than doing the Sergeant Schultz, I know nothing, I'm just following orders. Very simple to do. We need to, that, to me, is, and by changing that, it'll force our instructors to take a look at the kid, the kid needs more help, rather than dismissing them. Not, you know, that's my impression. I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't think I am. People nod, and I'm not. Okay.
Thank you.
So, and next year, we will develop an academics support program for the kids. We'll identify the kids that need the most help, and then put them in small groups and work with that during their enrichment period, rather than, now it's a study hall. That's what it is, and that's what they told me, they argued with me, so I said, fine, there's nothing I can do about it, I got, so.
I know, my own daughters have two study halls.
Yeah.
And I just, I just think it's a huge waste of time.
No, they even came to me about looking at, why does the middle school schedule have to be the same as the high school schedule? You know why it is? Because it's easier. There's no pedagogical reason, just more, it's easier to administer, it's standardized. Why can't we have the four core subjects in grades six, seven, and eight taught by four teachers, and then have the three periods that you use for electives and school-wide, the music, the arts, and things like that, and set that up? It's more work, but that's one of the things, you know, that I'm sitting here looking at. Let's go back to personalizing the program. The middle school kids will get the four teachers, they're able to now to talk to each other. The whole concept of middle school is a great concept, but rarely put into place. I've seen very few schools in the Commonwealth that really have a true middle school policy and a philosophy that's enacted, that now the teachers can decide the length of time, interchange the units and so on. If they want to do a great math unit, they can have more time. And then now the social studies, the science teachers support what happens in the math class, and then vice versa, and everything else. And that causes and creates the collaboration, the professional community that we want amongst the teachers, they have to talk to each other, but we've got a given time. And like I said, when I first came here, firm believer in W. Edwards Deming, it's really the organizational structure. If you have seven blocks, you teach five, you have a planning period and duty period, that's what you do. And that's pretty much what we have everywhere. We can change this, and that's one thing we're going to look at. And again, it'll help the high end and those that have greater needs, because they'll have more time to concentrate, and we can work with that. If that works in the middle school, there's no reason why in the world we can't move it up. Ninth-grade academy, might be a good idea to six through nine, you know? And then ten, eleven, twelve is senior high with the more discreet subjects. But that's a conversation I want to have this spring, after we finish the budget and so on, and then we look at the schedule and then work something out that can now look more at the needs of the kid rather than the contract. I get in trouble for saying those things.
Any more questions on this subject?
I'm set.
You're all set? Dr. O'Leary?
Ladies, thank you, nice to see you again. Just a little feedback from you all, as well as a question maybe to the superintendent. I know that we would all like to see things go faster, well, I certainly, I can't speak for everyone, would all, I would certainly like to see things go faster. I'm sort of expecting that they will, and would've, and should've, and I see some nominal improvement in the words that you use. We have partial performance, or partial, 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 which is better than the previous ones, which was, and no interval improvement. Is this, in your experience, ladies, or even to Buzz, is this to be accepted as adequate for speed of, and I know we're in this situation, but it seems like, you know, infinitesimal things, ELL, for instance, in first quarter to third quarter, not any improvement in anything, and we know this has been an issue, and we've been in this state, this issue for longer than three quarters, a long time, and I'm not picking on ELL, but it is sitting right there in front of me. I don't know, when?
Sure, so I'll take that question. So in many ways, what we're seeing here this year looks a lot to us like first-year implementation of an accelerated improvement plan. What we do recognize and appreciate that's happening right now is that there is a renewed focus with the execution of a plan with fidelity. There is the use of precision strategies in order to execute that plan. There's a much higher degree of alignment between the expectations and the policies and practices and structures put in place to achieve those outcomes, and that alignment is still certainly a work in progress. It's taken a lot of effort on the part of these administrators and with the support of the plan manager, with the leadership of the superintendent. We see a degree of relentlessness in encountering, in overcoming the typical barriers and obstacles and issues that one's faced when implementing change. And we're also seeing a great deal of transparency in terms of figuring out what is happening. And we're also seeing a great deal of transparency in terms of figuring out what is happening, looking at the results that you're getting, sharing those results with us and with the folks here, with the eye on improving it. And so in that respect, we have a great deal of optimism about the work moving forward, knowing where we are right now.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Loza?
At the rate that we're going, when do you think we'll become out of underperforming? It's been many years. We've sat here and listened to many presentations, accountability studies, and I've sat here for all of them. At the pace that we're going and everything is heading in the right direction, what would you say is a fair assumption that the Southbridge Schools Committee would not be underperforming? I know we're like a level four, I can't find a level four school in Southbridge, some of it I can't figure out. So could you just kind of give us a prediction, so we can, in terms of optimism or what the reality of the whole situation is?
Okay. So our optimism is definitely about the momentum that's taking place right now. So just want to remind the committee, since you asked the question on why Southbridge has a level-four status, so there are two pathways to getting into level four. One way is to have a level-four school, and Southbridge does not have a level-four school, so it doesn't meet that, it doesn't enter in that pathway. Another is to have district systems that are in need of repair. And those, that the needs were identified during a district review that was conducted about five years ago. And that ended up in the district having a turnaround plan, which was moving Southbridge forward, but hadn't yet reached a point where the systems were in place solidly enough for the commissioner and the board to make the decision to move Southbridge out of level-four status. And so the department provided the support of the plan manager and the work of the accelerated improvement plan, so we could provide more structure in order to accelerate that pathway, because we agree with you that we don't want a district to stay in that status. And so in order to exit the level-four district status, we are looking for the district to meet benchmarks in terms of improvement in student achievement and also in embedded practices through the implementation of the plan. And so at the end of every year, there is a reassessment of where the school districts are that are on accelerated improvement plans. And so we'll be looking at it at the end of this year, and we'll be coming back to you to give you a report on where we are when we report out in the last quarter.
So let me understand this. You don't have any projected timeframe. See, we were... I was told as a school committee member that one of the lagging things that we had was facilities problems. Of course, we since built the middle high school, and we're taking down portions of the old high school and stuff, which put us up at the top of the construction project. But I thought, I was under the impression, and I know that we're finding other things, that there would be some light at the end of the tunnel. The reason why I'm asking you the process is because I've seen the process stall in Boston at certain intervals, where we would be in a holding pattern. And when the public in the school committee comes forward and says, "Well, where are we? At the pace we're going, where are we going to be? And when do you think we could be completed at this time, at the pace that we're going right now?" And I know some of it is optimism because of various adjustments that we're doing as a district and personnel adjustments. So that's why I asked the question, so we can give the public some sort of idea of where we're headed and how fast we're going to get there in some... I know it's not a perfect prediction, but when you tell people, "Look, you're there, you're moving in the right direction, it'll take a little longer to do it, how long is it?" If there's... Like we use benchmarks in learning, shouldn't we state use benchmarks and accomplishments where we come off of certain things and we're showing progress? Or are we not progressing? And that would be the reality check.
Yep, so that's a good question. So the way that we provide feedback on where the district is in that trajectory is through the reporting out of the ratings. And so as you move toward more practices in place and embedded ratings, then that means that you're further along. And when you move from performance goals partially reached to performance goals reached, then that's indication that you're moving along. We see the accelerated improvement process as being typically sort of initially a two-year process. We think that it can be accomplished in general in two years. But we also understand that for different districts and in different situations, it may take longer than two years. But we do reassess at every year where you are with the implementation of the plan and improving student achievement.
So your prediction would be two years?
So it's probably a better, better to let the superintendent respond to that. I mean, he's completing his assessment and his plan implementation. He understands what the standards are in terms of getting the practices in place.
I wrote down, in fact, that's one of the things I've been thinking about extensively is moving from level four and what are the impediments that are in place for us to get to the next level? Obviously, student performance is the measure and the benchmarks that are there. But what influences student performance is probably the most critical component of the conversation. The one, I wrote down governance structures. How do you organize yourself? How do you create an atmosphere where the school committee and the leadership are all working and moving in the same direction? How do you identify, recruit, and train school leaders that have a commitment to the district and will stay more? One of the biggest problems in Southbridge is the constant churn of school leadership. I came new. Look out there, and at the high school, all four leaders are in their first year in their position. They're all, with all due respects, rookies. I look at the central office outside of Karen Ryan, most of the people there are new. Director of Special Education, first year. Director of Curriculum, former leader principal, first year in her job. ELL, first year. So, and we have a veteran principal with three years' experience here in the system. Elementary school, one school first year, other one, a retired person coming back. So if you believe that leadership and academic and educational leadership is the key to improving it, you have to have a system in place to identify, recruit, train, and keep your administrators over a period of time. All the research shows you that successful school districts have school committees that work together and stay, and a superintendent that's there at least five years. Okay? That's the minimal criteria. Seven to ten are the most successful ones. I look at the various other constraints. Well, our academic program was union and so on, so there are those issues. They say we need to get rid of that so-called deadwood. Everybody tells me that. Well, it takes a long time and a lot of money. Okay? And so on. I look at our pacing guide, our curriculum, I look at implementation of a data system, common tests being implemented, you know, and so on. This system's been underperforming for ten years. Okay? Where is that progress? I should have come in and there should have been structures in place for basic things, and they're not. Okay? I mean, I'm spending time dealing with, and I'm meeting today, with evaluation system for paraprofessionals. There is none. Hasn't been. So those are the kinds of things. I don't mean to be airing all this out, but the question got asked. And now my number-one goal in order to improve student performance is set up a structure with accountability in place, so we can hold the adults accountable to ensure that what happens in the classroom happens, as they say, it's going to happen. And not each principal, each school doing what they think is... These are good people. I'm not criticizing the people. You know, and I always say that my definition of chaos is good people doing whatever they think is right. And that's what we've had here. Good people, well-intentioned, but no system, no direction, no accountability in place. You go from school to school, you get these things, they're all different. So, I mean, one of the things I will be dealing and working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary, as an old coach, you asked a very specific question. If I want to get out of this, show me the exit criteria, right? Okay? And what do I have to do? And so that's one of the things we need to be a little clearer with, is establishing these and so on. But, oh, I forgot, I don't have a business manager. I'm the business manager too. Okay? I forgot that. And I'm also in charge of transportation. I've been riding around town dealing with garbage in people's front yards. It's been a very interesting period of time. But I'm confident. They are good people. And I think that we work with the state very carefully. They forced the school system to do certain things that are good, just as you heard Dr. Banda talking about and going over this. Show us your improvement on a regular basis. I think that's critical. I always said to a principal, when I ask them about their school, "How's it going at the school?" So, "Well, they're doing this and that." I says, "Well, where's the evidence? Show me." I'm like the old hamburger commercial with the old lady, she said, "Where's the beef?" I actually, I want to see evidence, okay? Now, don't tell me things are going good. I want to see the stuff that... And this AIP has forced the system to focus on the curriculum, on the data, the understanding of it, and so on. Like I said before, when I was in Brockton, my number-one goal was to have every adult in the system data-literate. Well, that's going to take us some time here, because people have closed their door and done what they thought was right. This learning walks is an eye-opener. I was meeting with dinner and so on. To me, what would create the stability and sustain the stability would be to take our learning walks, have every school do it on a regular basis. So every teacher during the course of the year is out of the room, observing other classrooms, and coming back and discussing that. Because you can now create a culture of talking about what's happening in the classroom. We've standardized... I was, I spent time at Charlton yesterday, and I wanted to see where they put their objectives. Well, they have them there now. So a kid walks in, looks over there, there's an objective for the lesson for the day, teacher sees it, and then works through it. Well, before it was, oh, I don't know. You know? So clear objectives, and we're working our way up through the system. So a long answer, but it's governance, it's resources, now I'm working with the budget. Well, you know, the town manager says you have about a little less than 5%. Okay, I'm not saying money is... We're going to redirect the resources, I'll work with whatever the school committee here works through, and so on. And we'll look at our organization, our structures and so on. I'm sitting here looking at possible structural changes for next year. Right now, we have a math, ELL, and ELA. I knew there was, you know, English, okay? All right? They're great people, but positional authority, when they walk into a room and talk the thing. So might we not be able to create someone that's in charge of elementary education, middle school education, and high school directors, so they can go in and work with the pedagogy of what happens in class? And curriculum, we're okay with. State has a great framework and all that. What we need to do is, are the people doing what they're supposed to be doing? So to us, a pacing guide, district-wide, and the four weeks, here is a common assessment each grade, based upon what was covered in that. And make sure somebody's there to see that it happens. And then have a reporting process of that. So those are the kinds of things we're sitting here looking at. Structurally, we need to dramatically change, because if what we have, if it was working, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in. So we can't continue the same old operation and, you know, like, that's the definition of insanity, you know, keep doing the same thing over and over again and hope for different results. And we can't continue doing the same thing over and over again and hope the kids get smarter. We have to make sure we do things that happen. So I sat here and I looked through it, and I'm saying to myself, "Okay, what are the roadblocks? What are the impediments? How do we get over those things? And how do we accomplish that? How do we get everybody in that, going in the right direction? Same page as a couple of years down the road. But make sure everybody's in the boat rowing. If you don't like where we're going, at least keep your oars up. Go for the ride." That's for right now. But curriculum maps are critical, which you asked about, you know? Higher-order thinking skills, if every classroom had a conversation for part of the thing about the questions that are issued with hand, right? Let the kids talk. You want to have the kids learn how to speak English, let them speak English. You know, those are the kinds of things that are very, very important. But we've allowed people to come in with their training, with their experience, what they think is right, and do that. So we have lots of different things going on. So leadership, governance, those are the things I...
Dr. O'Leary?
A final comment, thanks, Madam Chia. I'm sitting here listening, Buzz, and as well as, you already know, as well as other school committee members, I'm 100% behind you, and I'm really happy you came. And we were talking a few minutes ago about we have a bunch of relative rookies, if you will, first-year principal and a veteran of three years. And as time goes, they will get more time in, and they will... This is not about those positions either. Get more time in, get better at the craft, and expand their horizons and all that. And that's really good, and that shows us that we're moving in a reasonable direction, although three quarters on ELL or the slow improvements that we've seen, slow, slow. Scott had talked about five years and underperforming. Please remember, I'm just reiterating, I suppose, a fifth-grade kid has one chance to do it. He doesn't have year after year after year. A sixth-grade kid, so each time, each year, to me, that fifth-grade kid is being failed. That eighth-grade kid is being failed. If we're stuck in, you know, slow incremental improvements, we've spent a lot of time talking about how we're going to do things. And precious little, in my opinion, has come to where the rubber hits the road, if you will, and kids are still getting their one chance to excel or one chance to fail in a grade. And I feel like I'm as much a part of it as anyone else, but this is really frustrating. Thanks.
Mr. Loza?
I break my tongue in a lot of ways to become a team player, to try and move forward. Buzz, you know, I believe in a team concept. But the way I saw it six years ago was team concept, game plan. The plan was put together, the new middle high school was in the shoot. The revisions of the curriculum, Galileo was coming online, and we got our reports from the state. We put together a curriculum team, we put together team chairs, we put together all types of mid-management. We pay a lot of money. I don't think our problem is money in this district. We spent more money in the last nine months in pay hikes and adjustments than we usually do in any other year, ten years prior. The bottom line comes down to is, my line of questioning is this. We can sit here and constantly talk about this, that, and the other thing. I'm a team player, Buzz, I'm behind you 1,000%. If we're going right, we need direction to go right. I pour concrete for a living. You're an educator, you're an expert, 40 years' experience. These fine ladies from Boston are trained in their fields. When a school committee member asks a question, the question is sincere, because we really do want it done right. But we've had so many professionals come through here, 60, $100,000 a pop, and tell us what we need. And we were good team players, and we supported. And I'm sitting here today, this is the bad thing about being on school committee and having a tremendous amount of experience in government, because government is good at chasing its tail. So going forward, and I continue to try and do this, I know the new school committee members are very optimistic, I want to grab some of their optimism. I want to take my seniority and veteran status and melt with it and get behind you, Buzz. But the thing is, it's hard. I'm used to playing to win. Winning is getting to the end of the game in the fourth quarter, and the time is out, and you accomplish the mission. That's all I'm asking for, is a projected timeframe where whether I'm sitting in That's all I'm asking for, is a projected timeframe where, whether I'm sitting in this seat or somebody else is, that this district is going to reach it. Right now, every time I hear a story from the fine ladies from the state, I don't see a light at the end of that tunnel. So just with a little bit of common sense from a blue-collar worker, I don't have all the answers. I lean on educators. I look at a curriculum coordinator as probably one of the best moves. Did we lose a middle school principal? Yes. But we gained a great curriculum coordinator. Moves like that will bring us forward. But again, I'm looking for the game plan, Buzz, I'm with you, and the buzzwords, no pun intended, are still here, but I just want to work hard for progress, and I'm with you 100% on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. Mrs. McLaughlin?
Well, thank you. I appreciated Mr. Nembiko's earlier comments. I think if you have an opportunity to really hear him and speak to him, he lays out his vision in a way that I've never seen done before in this district. I think we've had a tremendous failure of leadership in this district for many, 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 many years, many superintendents prior to Mr. Nembiko. I'm not looking backward, I'm not looking to assess blame going backward. What I'm looking and what I'm hearing is that there are many, many layers to this complicated way out. It's not a direct tunnel out. It's going to take time, it's going to take work. I'm just as frustrated as everybody else, believe me, but we've only really recently begun to see what true leadership looks like, and we have to give that time to pan out. I mean, I think people forget that Mr. Nembiko has only been here for a couple of months, and the amount of work that he's done in those months is more than I have ever seen done in this district in the 10 years that I've lived here. So I appreciate everything that's going on by everybody who's invested here. I see the hard work, I know it's going to pay off, I know it is. I don't have a doubt about it, or I wouldn't be sitting up here. I wouldn't be spending my time, my energy, and I'm sure you wouldn't either, if you didn't believe that that was coming. And I look forward to helping out in any way that I can, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And talking about moving on, I'd like to move on to the next section. Dr. Domenico, if you have a question, go right ahead, but I'd like to keep going.
No, this is really not to you, it's really to ourselves. It just hit me two seconds ago, I didn't plan on saying anything. You know, we're looking for this light somewhere. Well, it's not going to magically appear. The state can't provide us, you know, with a flashlight at the end of the town, neither can the new superintendent, you know, find new batteries that's going to make that work. We, as a school committee, we need to define what the light looks like. That's why we're here. We're not here to ratify contracts and do all sorts of menial stuff that we do. We are here setting the school department policy for this town. Why do we not come with a plan that's going to say, and I'm just brainstorming, in three years, this is where we want to be? We want every building to be at a certain level of performance on all the indices that the state uses to judge us. Why don't we do that? We can, nobody else can do it for us. We can't wait for somebody else to tell us what's good enough. If we can't define that ourselves, then we'll have problems for another 10 years, because the superintendent's going to leave next year, and God only knows what's going to come after that. And just like Scott, I might not have been on school committee for as long as he has or some other members, but it's my eighth year too, and I've seen a couple of things happen around too. It's not going to be any different until we, as the governing body for this town and this school system, decide where we want to be, when, and how are we going to get that? And then ask people, like the superintendent, and people that we trust, with their opinions and their expertise, to tell us how to get there. And if we don't trust them, let's get rid of them. We shouldn't wait for somebody else to write us a prescription, how to cure this disease. This is our job, that's why we're here. That's what elections are all about. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else? If not, we can move on. I think, did Ms. Mitchell want to talk about the second section of this report, or are you all set with the...
We talked about the whole report, but I do want to thank all of you for allowing us to participate in this very rich conversation. Again, we see this as a two-year plan, what we, sort of in the ideal world, and what we see right now are first-year kinds of improvements on that trajectory, and we hope that as we come back, we'll continue seeing the plan move forward with the same kind of momentum, and we have optimism. And thank you for your focus on this conversation. It's the kind of conversation that we're hoping that school committees have, engaging in the real work, and being relentless and focused and determined to support the superintendent in the direction of improving the district. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. Moving on to the next agenda, which is a report of the superintendent, we have staffing update.
Staffing update has five positions that were hired, two grant-funded teachers, and then one replacement teacher, and then custodian and apparel that retired, and we filled those earlier. Resignations and retirements, we had one resignation of apparel, and then there was one dismissal for cause for a professional position this year. And the calendar, which I gave to you last time, this year's calendar is kind of unique because Good Friday and Patriots' Day fall within the same period of time. Normally, you have Patriots' Day as your April vacation, and then you worry about Easter and Good Friday some other time. So as you see in front of you, that they both coincide in pretty much the same week, so the vacation in April will have Good Friday and Friday, as it always is, and then Patriots' Day the following week, so it will be Monday through the following Monday for a holiday, which is state holiday. So that's the only change. We missed it last time because it didn't enter our minds. I don't know, it probably happens every 4,000 years or so, so...
I let you off easy this time.
Anything else?
I'm done with that. Just one last point. I think that Dr. Domenico is absolutely correct, and I may make a suggestion maybe over the summer, is that the school committee have a retreat, and then look at developing a strategic plan with outcomes over a three-year period, and not one that's 30 pages long that anybody's going to read, so on and so. If you work together, come through and provide that, and then say, at the end of three years, this is what we want to have the school system look at, and then we can fill in the blanks. We don't need to be hiring people to do all of this and so on, we can do that together. So I think that'd be a day that we could all take, well-spent, away from telephones and everything else, have the staff group make our presentations of our suggestions and so on, and then have you guys tell us if we want... Here's a timeline, as the old coach says, all right? We've got 60 minutes, and end of the first quarter, here's where we are, second quarter, right, and so on, and then here's the measurements. So I think that, Madam Chair, so on, if you work together and talk, and then get a date in the spring or early, so we can, once the budget's approved, put that in there.
Okay.
I want a drink of water.
Next agenda, school committee actions. A, vote to approve a donation in the amount of $1,500 for funding to purchase a golf cart for the Southbridge Middle High School. Donation money comprised of $620 by Dr. John Tumalo, M.D., and $880 by Rose Alicia Lamro. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Mr. Lozo had a motion, seconded by Mrs. Principay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lozo?
I would just like to send kudos out to Rose Alicia Lamro. I attended this Bago games. I didn't quite understand it, but by the time I got there, I attended it, it was unbelievable. It was a great time, competition, everybody had fun, they had a meal, they really did a fantastic job. I think that if they do it next year, the hall might be too small, that's how successful it was. I just want to give her a pat on the back, it's parents like her that make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Same thing, I'd just like to thank Rose Alicia Lamro for taking the lead on that, and also to Dr. and Mrs. Tumalo for making up the difference for the carts. That's greatly appreciated, it's a good community effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a roll call vote, please, Max?
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domenico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Vote to approve the revised 2013-2014 school year calendar. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lozo, seconded by Dr. Domenico. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domenico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business. A, we have the third and final reading of the Transportation to and From School Policy File EEAA. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Dr. Domenico?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of all the policies, A through F. Second.
All right, so we have a motion to waive the readings by Dr. Domenico, and a second by Mrs. Principay. Any discussion on any of that? Mrs. Principay?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like everybody to know that these, Lauren McLaughlin here has posted all of our policies in our administrative building on Colav. It's in the hallway, it's a second bulletin board. Every time there's a reading, the first, second, third readings, third is the final approval of the policies. Also, I would very much like to see these policies on our school website. With the third reading, they should then go to the school website, and I haven't seen it, I haven't seen that yet. Just briefly, the last policy we worked on was school councils. We, ours, we need to be consistent with our schools regarding the school council. Every school has to have a school council, that is mass general laws. There are two co-chairs, one is the building principal, and the other is a parent or a business individual. There must be parity in a school council, so for as many teacher or professionals within the school district that are on the school council, there must be an equal number of parents and/or business people. We had exhibits, which we more or less should not have been an exhibit, so they were worked into the policy, and I just wanted to find the role of the school council, is an adoption of educational goals for the school that are consistent with state and local policies and standards, identification of the educational needs of the students attending the school, review of the school building budget, and formulation of the school improvement plan. And that's pretty big, and that is implemented only by review of the school committee and the approval of the superintendent. One of the exhibits that we will be voting to rescind is the conduct of council business, which really isn't an exhibit, it's that we follow mass general laws, and that we follow Robert's rules, and that there will be co-chairs, and one will be a parent, et cetera. Just one other thing, I'll make this as quick as possible. The school councils play a large role in the school improvement plans, and the plans, I just want to say, should be drafted with the following in mind: The mission of the Southbridge Public School District, and any goals and policies of the district, educational goals for the school, consistency with goals and standards, assessment of the needs of the school, means to address student performance, professional development, enhancement of community parental involvement in the life of the school, safety and discipline, anticipated costs and available funding, development of means for meeting the diverse learning needs of every child, method of evaluating and reporting progress and results. We also encourage that the school councils are voted upon at the end of the school year so they can be prepared to begin work for the next school year. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to waive all the readings by Dr. Domenico, seconded by Mrs. Principay. I just want to read them real quickly so the public is aware. The first three are third and final readings, that would be the Transportation to and From School Policy EEAA, then it would be the Field Trips, Overnight Travel, and International Travel File JJH, and the Student Travel Regulations JJHR. Those are all third and final readings. The next three are first readings, and that's School Councils BDFA, School Improvement Plan BDFAA, and School Council Regulations BDFAR. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Dr. Domenico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Abstain.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Six yes, one abstain.
Motion passes. Is there any other unfinished business this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. The next regular school committee meeting will be held on April 9, 2013, in the council chambers. Is there any other new business for this evening? Seeing none, we have executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation, to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental party pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 3. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Principay, seconded by Dr. Domenico. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domenico?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, we'll return to open session for adjournment only.